Welcome, I'm Mo Handel, Select Board Chair. I confirm that all members of the board are participating through Zoom US. They are Dan Matthews, Vice Chair Matt Borelli, John Bullion, Marion Cooley, and Town Staff present are Kate Fitzpatrick, Assistant Town Manager Dave Davison, and Assistant Town Manager Katie King, and other town staff members may be joining us later as we go to items on the agenda. This open meeting of the Needham Select Board is being recorded. It's been posted on the town's website, which is also spells out how the public may gain access to this meeting. All attendees are here by video conference. Public access does not ensure that the public participation unless required by law. Anything that you share here or state may be captured by the recording and will become a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Please mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. Please speak clearly and in a way that helps assure accurate minutes. Please wait until recognized by name, and please also state your name again before speaking. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be by roll call. Now, before we start the formal agenda for this meeting, I would like to mention the sad loss of our friend, all of our friends here, Greg Shesko, who passed away last week. He had recently resigned from his position as a longstanding member of the Library Board of Trustees due to his long illness. He was a friend to many of us and an active member of our community. He will be sorely missed, and I would like to open that up if any other board members who remember Greg would like to say anything before we begin the meeting. John Bullion?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, just like all of us, I mean, I go back with Greg probably 25 years. You know, I considered Greg a friend. We would speak regularly. We shared, you know, all of the information about our families. So sad, so sad. My heart goes out to Marilyn and Liz. And it's a sad loss for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Matt, Dan Matthews?
Yeah, Greg was known to all of us for a long period of time. I think I first met him when he first wanted to run for town meeting years ago, and at that point, I think he was already involved as a library volunteer. And he really ended up contributing hugely to the library here in Needham in terms of his work in the reconstruction and expansion of the library here and its programs and facilities, but also library work statewide and a lot of other civic activities here. A good friend and a good neighbor, and he's missed. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. The first item on our agenda is about a zoning change proposal for 100 West Street, which is the old Avery Manor building. We have guests with us tonight. And I will read their names, but I would ask that they identify themselves when they begin to speak. Roy Kramer is here as Council for LCB Senior Living. Evan Huber is Council for LCB Senior Living. Lee Bloom, LCB Senior Living. Ted Doyle, LCB Senior Living. David Kelly, who's the project engineer. Anthony Viverito, who's the project architect. Erin Fredette, who's traffic engineer, and Louise Ganakis, who is the council for the current owner. Mr. Kramer, I'd like to turn the floor over to you for the presentation. And welcome. Roy, you're on mute.
I'm muted. Thank you. Everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I'm representing LCB Senior Living. It was, as Mo said, is proposing to redevelop 100 West Street, which is the old Avery Crossing, Avery Manor Assisted Living Facility, nursing home, and there's also about 8,000 square feet of office space. What LCB is proposing is to have a new assisted living Alzheimer's Memory Loss Center for part of the building and the other part of the building to have independent living units. And the footprint of the building is going to remain the same. The one park, one of the parking areas is going to remain the same, except to have enhanced landscaping. And the other parking lot facing the railroad will have minor changes. What we'd like to do tonight is first describe the project to you so you know what we have in mind, and then circle back to the particular zoning relief that we need in order to develop the project. So what, and I know that time is, we don't want to take too much of your time, so I think we'll just start with Lee Bloom and Ted Doyle at LCB, who'll just speak very briefly, and then we'll go through the different consultants to talk about their specialties. And then, if you have any questions, we'll discuss that. I will say that we have been meeting with the planning board. And as of last Tuesday, after three meetings and a number of conversations back and forth, they're in favor of the project, and they've agreed to sponsor the two warrant articles at Fall Town Meeting. So we were very happy that they think this is a good project, and we're in agreement on the language. So we wanted to talk to the full board tonight with the eventual hope that you would support the project as well. And we've met with several of the neighbors. We are hoping to meet with Needham Heights Neighborhood Association and the Council of Economic Advisors, as well as the FinCom. So what I like to do is just turn the program over to Ed Bloom and Ted Doyle. And just one minor correction, my law partner Evan Huber is here. There was a typo that had him down as Evan with no S, but it's Evans. And he'll be talking about some of the zoning particulars. So if Lee and Ted, if you're available.
Yes.
Thank you. Ted, Ted, before you start, I apologize, but David Kelly just texted me that he can't unmute. So I don't know if that's something we should deal with now or when.
I'm testing now, Lee.
Okay, good.
He's coming through.
Okay, great. Sorry about that, Ted.
That's okay, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Ted Doyle with LCB Senior Living, I'm the Vice President with the company. We've been developing senior housing in the greater Boston area for about 25 years in two, a couple of different forms. In fact, we had offices over in Wells Park back in the day, not too long ago. We build independent assisted memory care living for seniors. That essentially is a private apartment with the availability of a number of services with the activities of daily living, such as bathing, dressing, escorting, medication reminders, all non-medical interventions. Just helping people to, in a sense, sort of turn back the clock and be the people they've always been without having to worry about those day-to-day tasks. Our buildings, we consider them brand homes. There are apartments for people to sleep in and have some privacy. But we also have libraries, a gym, and this building will have a pool, living rooms, country kitchens, and outdoor spaces that are really designed to encourage our residents to be out of their apartment and socialized, which is one of the biggest benefits that we provide to them. We consider our communities to be part of the greater community, so we do a lot of programming with high schools and theater groups, and we invite state senators to have district meetings. We really like to be an open door where people can come and go, and we can be an active and giving part of the community at large. We're tax positive. We're a for-profit organization. We have a very low impact on local services. This particular project will create approximately 100 jobs, full and part-time, and we will put about $3 million a year into the local economy in terms of salaries and goods and services purchases. We're happy to answer any and all questions you have about us. I want to keep it brief because we have limited time and I'm respectful of your time tonight. But just let me know if there's anything else I can tell you about us and what we do.
Thank you. I'd just like to add one thing, that we're partnering up with the current owner of the building, Walt Tower. Strong partnership with our operation capabilities, their strength as a large we dedicated to more healthcare issues. We've really designed a program here that we think can really take this, take this community far. What we're proposing here is 72 independent units, 55 and over, 55 assisted living units, and 28 memory care units. And I think at this point, we'll turn it right over to our architect, Anthony Viverito from TAT. Ted, you have the, if you can put the slides up on the shared screen. You're muted. You're muted.
There you go.
Okay, I'm screen sharing. Is there something else I need to do?
Yeah, I'm not, it's still telling me that the host is disabled screen sharing.
It says Zoom on the screen share portion here.
Sandy, you just needed to enable it.
No, it's on your end, I'm afraid. The host is disabled participant screen sharing.
Correct.
Okay, I can fix that.
Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Sandy Sincotta, who is administering this Zoom, and it's a very complicated task, believe me, we've all experienced trying to do that. Sandy has done a great job. Thank you, Sandy.
Ah, there we go.
Good.
Can you all see me?
Yes.
All right, good. There you go. Heard about this. Anthony?
Yep, keep, keep going, Ted. Yeah. Now we'll go to the aerial, the aerial perspective from the southeast corner, which is just after that, Ted.
Yeah?
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. My name's Anthony Viverito. I'm the architectural representative for the architectural team in Chelsea, Mass. I've been working with our, with the applicant for about nine years. And we worked throughout New England and the Mid-Atlantic on various ground-up assisted living projects. During this nine years or so, we've completed about 14 communities together. The Carter Mill project would be our first renovation, renovation in addition to an existing building. And our experience in this space and the assisted living goes back to the 1990s, when assisted living was just being developed in New England. And so we have a long history at TAT, working with all types of buildings, converting them in one manner or another to, for residential use. Assisted living buildings today, I think one of the goals is to get them to be integrated with the community in which they draw their residents. And a significant, significant history of this mill makes this building something of a landmark for the community because of its physical prominence to the downtown area. We've been very conscious to be sensitive to the new design elements of our design, which we feel will enhance the overall existing building perception. I'll take you through a series of slides here relatively quickly. And the view that we have in front of us here is from the south, the southeast corner of the site of the proposed building, and you can see that there's a fourth, a partial fourth floor on the existing roof here that would consist of 10 independent living units and a assisted living pavilion. Ted, the next slide, please. This series of slides will be the existing condition today and then the proposed. So here's the existing street elevation at Highland Ave in the southeast corner. And next, and the proposed elevation. And David Kelly will go through his presentation and talk about some of the streetscape changes that we'll be making. But we'll just go through these slides and get into a little bit more detail. Next slide, please. This is the corner, existing corner of Highland Ave and West Street. And next, and the proposed. And so here, we wanted to show you what, what you'll see of this fourth floor from these different vantage points. The next slide, please. Here's the existing, this is the entry drive to the existing facility. And the proposed. Next. This is the existing, the existing roof and all the equipment that's on the roof today that a significant renovation was done in the building in 1994. So a lot of, a lot of what we see here is from that time period. Here is the fourth floor of the penthouse. Fourth floor of the penthouse. View, if you can go back, I'm sorry, go back one, yeah. And so this fourth floor level will have exterior terraces for the residents. And is a sort of envisioned as their own sort of private courtyards, if you will. And the building massing has been set back from Highland Ave to minimize the view shed. Next. And a few more of these views of existing from Mellon Street. And then the proposed, and the building height here is roughly about 44 feet to the top of the new fourth floor. And another view perspective from Highland Ave and Wharton Street, and the proposed. And again, the parking lot view. And from Hillside Avenue. This thing proposed, yep. And some of our orthogonal elevations, of course, we'll be going through a review process next year with a favorable vote. This for Fall Town Meeting, but this gives you a sense of the scale and some of the coloration of the of the new fourth floor and the various, there are various other design elements that have been added to these elevations, including walkout patios for, at the ground level on Highland Ave for the independent living residents. Next slide, please. Ted?
Yeah, I did. Matt? This one?
Perfect, yep. And here are the floor plans. The existing building is roughly 189,000 gross square feet. And with the fourth level, we will be, it adds another roughly 16,000 square feet. So we'll be in the neighborhood of 200 and over 205,000 gross square feet for the building, but just to orient you to the plan, the entry to the, the proper entry to the building is from West Street on the right side of the image here. And there are a series of smaller roundabouts, the first of which is the, is the assisted living and memory care entry point. And the residents and, and family staff will enter through a common lobby. And the units that are, the coloration there in light blue is the memory care wing of the building, which will have at-grade access to a garden on the north side of the building and a series of other outdoor spaces on the, on the entry side of the building. The, to the left half of the building, the L-shaped portion of the plan, that is in the existing parking, at-grade parking, where you pull under the building, and portions of that parking area have been modified into residential units. There are independent living units that are in the blue color along the edge of the building there. And each of those units will have their own dedicated patio, garden patio that is so they have direct access to the grade outside of their unit. The next level up is the second floor plan. And again, the organization of the plan, if you take the L-shaped portion of the plan on the left, you can see where it notches in. That was, you know, one of the original, the original footprint of the building. And to the left side is the independent living wing of the building, which is segregated from the right half of the plan, which is the assisted living, first level of the assisted living floor. And there are, this level, the second level is the dining level, so there are dining rooms. But as is typical for assisted living and independent living, there's also common areas, program areas for the residents throughout the floors. But the two populations are separated at that notch in the building, if you will. The next floor, please. And here is the third level, and the same organization goes, follows along. The left side of the plan, L-shaped, is the independent living with theater and other amenity spaces. And to the right, the long-shaped bar is the assisted living. Also, they have a theater on this level. And then the next level, please. And the fourth floor, there are the, on the left side, the new independent living units and their dedicated courtyards and general courtyards. In the center is a mechanical farm, if you will, an enclosed mechanical area. And to the right, along the bar is a assisted living pavilion, if you will. It's a program space for families, and they have an outdoor deck as well. And I believe that's, that covers all the architectural items, and I hand it over to David Kelly.
I just wanted to say one thing, maybe just clarify. The, as you'll see in the zoning, the fourth floor was deliberately designed so that, with the exception of the west facade, which faces the railroad, there is setbacks from the existing facade. And we did that to minimize as much as possible the view from, from other properties. And we also have a maximum percentage, I think it's 35% of the, of the existing roof can be developed with these, with these additional units. So it was, we thought carefully about how much of a setback we can to minimize the, the impact on the neighborhood. Just, I just want to make sure that the, the members knew that. So I apologize, and let's go on to David Kelly, our project engineer.
Thank you, Roy. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, David Kelly with Kelly Engineering Group. I just want to say firstly, I've been involved in many projects in, in Needham, many of which you'll probably know, including, for instance, the Continental Wingate project that was built a few years ago. And I'm really excited to be a part of this project. It's an exciting redevelopment of a underutilized site, and we're just really pleased to be on the team. So thank you for allowing me to present my portion of it this evening. I'll, I'll be quick. I know that we're, we don't have a lot of time. And so what I'd like to do is just quickly take you through the site today and the proposed site, and you can get a feeling and understanding for what's being proposed. This is the site. It's in the same orientation you've seen all along with north facing the right. The railroad is behind. Highland Avenue is on front. And onto the right side or on the bottom, and on the right side is West Street. As Anthony pointed out, the main entry to the property today is West Street. It's over right next to the railroad on the right side of that screen that you see. You would enter the site there. There's a drop-off area. You would continue to an underground garage, which is in the center of the building halfway down. And as you head further in, you would see this little roundabout area, and there's a, there's some landscape features in the center. You could continue through into the existing, into the existing garage, and the garage actually travels through the site to the parking lot on the south side. Just for your information, a portion of the site is located in the residential district on the south side of the site. The site's 4.3 acres, for your information, and the building footprint's about 64,000 square feet. There's about 193 spaces. The site is quite tired today, and what hopefully I can do is describe the sort of exciting re-visitation of the site and renewing of the site. So if you could show me the next screen, Ted, please, and we'll go to the next one, please. Thank you. So this is the entire site. It's in the same orientation that you see. Again, this maybe adds a little better perspective since you can see the railroad behind the neighborhoods to the west and east and Highland Avenue in the, in the bottom of the page or in the middle of the page. So I'd like to take you through that same route through the site, and I'll take you through it quickly, and you can start to get a flavor for what's going to happen. So as you enter off of West Street, everything you see on this is, is either new landscaping or maintained landscaping that's, that is going to be pruned and renewed. There's a nice buffer along the right-hand side as you enter between there and the railroad, which is important to the site. There's the parking area will essentially remain unchanged. However, we're going to make some adjustments to it, all to enhance the outdoor use of the site and enhance the circulation in the site. So once again, if we go, if we enter the site, on the left side, you'll see that nice landscaped area that's between West Street and in the corner of Highland Avenue. It's really going to be a focal point that will be very obvious to anybody who passes by and really bring you into the site. As you continue in further on West Street, there is the drop-off area, as was pointed out earlier, for the assisted living facility. That, that will all be upgraded and enhanced with landscaping. As we continue further in on that same route to the site, you'll see this outdoor amenity area that consists of outdoor seating and bocce courts and other outdoor amenities. Continuing into the site is the service area. The kitchen is located, if you remember from Anthony's slides, in that center area of the building. And then continuing further down, we've enhanced that area. We've removed parking spaces and tried to enhance the landscaping in that area. Again, you hit, you'll meet the roundabout, which is, which is going to be enhanced with, with different types of pavement. And then we'll, we'll have a new exit from the garage in the corner of the building. And alternatively, you would continue through the garage or into the garage and to the southerly parking area, which will remain essentially unchanged other than additional landscaping along that side. The, the parking will be reduced from what was shown originally. There is more parking than is needed on this site. And the goal here was to maximize the landscaping and the outdoor amenities instead of large paved surfaces. The, the, the sort of technical things that we will deal with as we go forward, again, we've done many projects in Needham where we understand what's expected. But the, the project would fully comply with all of the, all of the town's regulations for stormwater management and other technical items. And we'll continue to work with your Department of Public Works as we develop these plans further, hopefully, in, in the fall. So, Mr. Chairman, that's just a really quick overview, and I know time is short, but I'd be pleased to answer any questions. Now we're at the end of the presentation. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Next, Erin Fredette from McMahon Associates, who is our traffic engineer.
Thank you, Roy. Again, for the record, Erin Fredette, I'm a project engineer, a professional engineer and project manager with McMahon Associates. The traffic engineers on the project. This first slide is just a few summary. This first slide is just a few summary points, takeaways to read for later if needed from our traffic study. And so next slide, Ted. We did a full traffic impact study for the proposed project, including the intersection of Highland and West Street, as well as the proposed project site driveways. We, we already looked at those and did a full study with those. But in our presentation to the planning board, there were additional concerns raised about other intersections, one of which was Hillside Avenue in West. And so we'll be also looking at that in the future as part of the permitting process. Our study also looked at existing and future conditions. We've been in coordination with the town engineer. So we are up to date with all of the things that are happening in the area, including improvements at the signal and so on. So all of those have been accounted in our study and in our study, we look at. The future condition, both with and without the project. And this, this particular, these particular land uses are generally very low traffic generators. And in this particular case, we even have a comparison to the previous land use, which next slide, Ted. As you can see in the charts, the previous land use, which included assisted living, a nursing facility and medical offices. Resulted in a much higher number of vehicle trips, not just during the weekday morning and weekday afternoon peak hours, but also over the course of the entire day. Our proposed project, which is depicted in the orange, as you can see, is it's going to be projected to be less than half of what. The trips that were previously on the site were. And so it's a, it's a much less intense use, especially as it relates to the nursing facility, which can high. Have a higher number of employees and and medical offices, which have a lot more to and from associated with them. And next slide. We also looked at parking as part of the proposed zoning articles. And what is being proposed is is either comparable to what is already on the books. In Needham. So for the assisted living, we used a similar. Parking calculation, which is a half space per bed and a single space per two employees, which is the same as nursing facility. And again, is nursing facility is a more intense use. So we're using the same for the assisted living. So it would be more parking. Then and what we're projecting is needed. And for the independent portion, we're proposing one space per dwelling unit. In the elder services zoning district, right now there is one space, I'm sorry, one space per, I'm sorry. A half space per unit. And so what we're proposing on site again, is going to be providing more parking than other locations in Needham. And when you look at all those calculations, we're proposing 149 parking spaces on site. When we look at institutional data that we have, we're projecting a peak period demand of only about 80 spaces. So we anticipate that the parking on site is going to be more than sufficient to meet the peak period demands. That are typical for this type of land use. In addition, there's, there's additional on-street parking. We're close to public transit. There are services nearby. So all of those things contribute to a much lesser and smaller impact on the adjacent roadways and facilities. Again, trying to be brief. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at the end. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mark Fugie to discuss the fiscal impact.
Good evening. There you go. Mark Fugier, Fugier Playing Development. I worked on the fiscal impact report for the project. And fiscal impact report basically looks at not only the potential revenue and new development will generate in the community. But we also look at what type of impacts have a project will have on departments. And that's what we did in this case. As far as revenue, we looked at four areas of revenue. Working with your assessing department and also looking at the area market. We estimate that the new development is going to be assessed at approximately $37.6 million, which will generate $470,000 in property taxes. Given the investment in this facility and the internal improvements that will be made, personal property tax revenue is estimated to be $49,000 a year. There will be some residents that own cars and independent units. So we're expecting some excise tax revenue of 21,000. And then with the Community Preservation Act that exists in the community, $9,400 a year is expected for that. So in total, we're looking at just over $550,000 a year in revenue to the community, which is a significant increase over what is being received today. Property taxes on the existing building is approximately $175,000. The, as far as municipal impacts to departments, we honed in on two departments that we feel are the, were the most vulnerable. Or will see the most direct impacts. That would be police and fire, not surprisingly, from this type of development, there will be those schoolchildren. Living in this facility. So one of the key metrics we use to measure impacts for this type of use is we review police call data and fire call data to similar types of projects. We collect that data and average it out and we're anticipating approximately 100 new calls for police department. And 54 new fire calls per year and 131 EMS calls. We did sit down and discuss these impacts with the police chief and fire chief. Talking with the police chief, he thought carrying a half, the cost of one half of a police officer was a reasonable expense, which is about 40, $50,000 a year. And we're carrying the cost of a firefighter for the fire department, carrying the cost of $111,000 a year. I should note that EMS revenue will be generated from this use of approximately $68,000. The other only expense that we think we may occur in the community is from the Board of Public Health. So a total cost of $162,000. So the project, we believe, will have a positive fiscal impact of $388,000. As I mentioned, the assessment will be going up significantly from 9.4 to 37 million, an increase of over $28 million. Property taxes will increase significantly from 175 to $470,000. Construction will take approximately 18 months and during that time, obviously, there'll be some economic boost in the economy from the construction activity. And then afterwards, from the new employees that will be working at the facility, some 87 full-time new jobs along with meal tax. And general economic activity for the community. So overall, we think this will have a very positive impact on the, on the town. And certainly better than the empty use that's occurring there today. And it'll be a benefit for the community. I'll turn it over to Evans.
Yes, thank you, members of the board. I'm Evans Huber. I'm Roy Kramer's law partner and one of the attorneys working on this team. So Roy and I have been the principal. Drafters of the proposed warrant articles and they've undergone some renovations, some revisions as a result of feedback we've gotten from the planning board. But in general, our approach in drafting these warrant articles was to. Which would create this new overlay district, which we're calling the Avery Square Overlay District. The goal was to draft the warrant article as narrowly as possible so that it would allow. What is being proposed here, but not anything significantly beyond that. So there are two warrant articles. The more significant one is the one that would set forth the limitations. Of the Avery Square Overlay District and what is and is not allowed. And the primary. Aspects of the warrant article that I wanted to draw your attention to was are summarized on the next slide, please. So. The proposed warrant article would allow a maximum height in the Avery Square Overlay District of 44 feet. Currently in the Avery Square Business District, the maximum allowable height is 35 feet. And in addition to the 44 foot maximum allowable height, some additional height would be needed for the elevator overrun. So those would be permitted to be as high as 49 feet. The number of stories that we're proposing is four, all of which would be allowed to be occupied. Right now, the maximum allowable number of stories in the Avery Square Business District is two and a half. And only two of those are permitted to be occupied. But it's also worth noting that the building right now. Is a three-story building with. Until the use was discontinued, all three stories being occupied. So this is not as great a change as going from two and a half to four. In addition, Roy alluded earlier in the presentation to the fact that we are. Trying to be as mindful as we can of minimizing the visual impact of the fourth story. So the warrant article includes provisions that would require setbacks of the fourth story. In the envelopes that we've currently drawn. So that would be 110 feet from the north side, from the West Street side. 35 feet from the south side. These are setbacks from the edge of the building, 15 feet from the Highland Avenue side. No setback on the. On the. West side of the building, which overlooks the parking area. The Roy also referred to the fact that. In order to ensure that. The. Fourth story. Is, you know, only as we have drawn it and not any larger. The Avery Square Overlay District warrant article would allow a maximum coverage on the fourth floor of 35% of the roof, not including mechanicals. But that would prevent, you know, the fourth story from being bigger than we are currently proposing it. Next slide, please. So the uses that we would be planning to use in this building, as been mentioned, are assisted living. And memory care units as well as independent living. Those uses would be allowed by special permit, not as a matter of right. We had originally approached this with the thought that they would be allowed as of right. But based on feedback and discussion with the planning board, we've revised it. So that the proposed warrant article would now allow those uses by special permit. We've also drafted in the warrant article a requirement that 12 and a half percent of the independent living. Units be affordable. Next, next slide, please. Yes. And then as a. Less important feature, at least for these purposes, there's also a map change warrant article, which defines the boundaries. Of the Avery Square Overlay District, basically contiguous with the. Portion of the site that is in the Avery Square Business District. As David Kelly mentioned, there's a small portion of the, of the south parking lot that extends into the. Adjacent Single Residence B District. But the thought was that it would be better to define the limits of the Avery Square Overlay District to be consistent with the. Boundaries of the Avery Square, the underlying Avery Square. Business District. So those are the primary features of the warrant article. And if anyone has any questions or concerns about the language, we'd be happy to respond to them.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Matt Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the presentation and the thorough amount of information we received, I think close to over 200 pages or so with the traffic studies. So those are very helpful. Just a couple of comments that I have, general comments. Supporting the concept. I think it's a great reuse of that building. We're very familiar with that building. We've known people who used to live in that building. And I think to create something different than what was their centrifugal idea. The fourth floor, the idea of trying to set it back so that it's not so obvious, I think is terrific. I guess my concern, I'm not a designer and I know you have the planning board and design review, is it doesn't look to me to be. Attached to the building. I don't know if it's the color or the modernization versus the backdrop of the existing building. Just a thought that I have. Again, I'm not here to redesign your project, but to me, it's very obvious that it's a fourth floor addition. Instead of kind of blending in and being less obvious, we're trying to get that idea of a less obvious.
Matt, can I interrupt you just at that point?
And I ask that you stop the screen sharing and then proceed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The, what we did was the color of the fourth floor is not the color that we intend to construct. We wanted to make it. Different from the rest of the building, just for purposes of you being able to to see what the, what the extra floor was going to be. The group is still working on the color and some of the architectural elements. And. We don't think it's going to be that the final color will be anything close to what you saw. But that's really just for visual, you know, just for visualization of where it was going to be and what the limits of the fourth floor will be.
Thank you.
Exactly. I agree with Roy. It's Lee Bloom and color and materials are, we're working with them now. So when we get through this phase, if we do, then when we get to the permitting phase, we'll have some much better graphics for you, more representative of what it will be.
And just a couple more things, Mr. Chair. Well, I have it. Traffic study, I had the same concern about, I guess the planning board did about a couple of those intersections. So I'd be interested to see what mitigation is proposed as this moves forward, as we've done with other projects. And then my last point is, I was great to see the portable component. Needham residents, is there a tier system? How do, how do you approach Needham residents applying in other projects or is it first come, first served?
Typically, typically what we do is market those units a little bit ahead of time locally. So that local folks have a chance to to respond first. There are limitations, as you alluded to, to how much we can say who can live there and who can't live there. But that's typically how we handle that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Mr. Bullion.
Thank you. Good presentation. As Matt said, extraordinarily detailed. And, you know, I, my mother was in that building for a time and I know it very well, or I used to know it. You know, I think this is a tremendous reuse for this property. I think bringing the independent component to it. Really provides additional life and vibrancy to the Heights area. Where residents of your facility can take advantage of the senior center, which is a short, short walk down the street. And the other amenities that the Heights offers. So I think this is a win-win for the town. Clearly, I'm very pleased to see the financial elements to this, but this looks good. I think that the details of, of the aesthetics, those will continue to be, to be worked on. And I'm looking forward to see this project move along and. I am, I am supportive of this in the, at the Fall Town Meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews. You're unmute Dan. You're muted, Dan.
Yeah. I'm, this is a great project. It's a terrific contribution to the community, but I do want to take a minute or two to review one element of concern. And it's a great project. I'm all in favor of it. It's a great reuse of the building. It's both consistent with what's been there in the past and an improvement on that. I have questions about some detailed things, but you've already been to the planning board and you'll be working further with them and the permitting authorities. So that's good. But my, the thing I want to address is this is an urban and envi, you know, relatively quiet town, as many of us think of it. This is an urban environment and you're make, going to be contributing to that with this development. The site is across the tracks from a train yard. It is adjacent to a train station. It abuts a grade crossing and there's another grade crossing within 500 feet. The, there are, there are two and sometimes three diesel train sets based in the train yard. They are essential to the transportation network of the community and the townspeople and people who work here rely on them. They are diesel train sets. They start at 5:00 AM, sometimes earlier in the winter because they have to in order to be able to be assured of being available for the. For the, for the people who need to travel. There are horn regulations, both for what we would consider basic safety, but also federal regulations requiring the soundings of horns. As trains approach the grade crossings. So this is going on at intervals all day long with respect at significant distances in some cases from these two. Two crossings. Most of the people in town. Most of the people in town are are familiar with this, and they don't mind it. Some even like it, but there are others really don't like it and want us to have something else. And over the last ten years, we've worked on a number of different things. We've had public hearings, we've involved staff time, we've involved attorneys. Um we've looked, we've worked with the MBTA. We've um involved consultants and engineers and a wide variety approaches. And some changes have been made that hopefully are beneficial and helpful to everyone involved. Um and that's not to say that there might not be changes in the future. We've had neighbors come in and residents come in within the last few months wanting to talk about, well, what about reviewing this? This in the future. But it's not an easy subject to make changes that might reduce noise or 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 factors relative to the presence of of the of the train system and the station and the and the train yard. Um and it's really important to me, as one member of 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 the select board that is frequently the first responder in hearing these concerns, will we be clear with you that you're bringing in one hundred and fifty-plus new residents to the neighborhood, hopefully? And those people, once they're here, they'll live here just like everybody else, and they can say and do whatever they want, including saying they don't like the train noise. But I sure don't want to hear anybody say, oh, nobody ever told me about this, or you have an obligation to change this. This is one of many things that goes on in the community that we've worked. A certain uh approach to this works reasonably well for most folks here. I don't want any, I think your project is great, but people have to understand this and be realistic about what kind of expectations they they can have in an urban environment. And we sure don't want to be here that anybody tell us, well, that they were misled by you because we will send them right back to you to talk that over. Okay, as long as that's up understood, I'm all in favor of this.
And and let me say, Dan, if I could, um that is understood. Um I did the permitting of the original facility in nineteen ninety-three, and the same issue came up at that point. And and we had uh, you know, the 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 assisted living and uh and and the nursing home. And um uh we're not gonna hide that issue. It's um, so we're gonna be upfront about it. Um I don't think there were any complaints that I remember about the noise from the assisted living folks, you know, from when they opened in ninety-three, ninety-four. Uh but um uh if it's not completely obvious to anybody who's looking, you know, for an independent living unit or even assisted living, um the LCB will um uh we'll be aware of that, so no one will be surprised.
Yeah, I would just add that um we 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 draw from a fairly small geography uh when we market. So most of the people who live in this building, were we to get approved, would be coming from within three or five miles, or their kids would. So there is gonna be some local knowledge that goes into the buying decision. Um and 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 so that that's that. We also are located in other locations, um Melrose or right on the train station there. Uh we are familiar with this kind of setting, and it and it really does not, I mean, one of my responsibilities is marketing, and and it really has not hindered us in that regard. So thank you for that, we really appreciate you keeping our eyes open to that, but I think we're, I think we're comfortable with that.
Um, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, just one final note to that. Uh we have been having conversations with Director Butters, and it also came up in our conversations with the planning board um about the train and the dynamics of it. Uh we are, again, well aware of it, we'll make our people aware. And we've also, as things progress and open up the building, again, should we be approved, um we're more than willing and happy to be part of whatever committee or whatever to help moving forward with this as well.
Well, but kind of my point is, we've spent a lot of time on this, and there can be change. And the people that are here have a right to uh participate. And I'm not gonna speak to that, but I am saying, and I'm, you know, this here, this meeting is being conducted under the governor's um special hearing rules. And and this, the record of this meeting will be here after I'm gone. And I just want to be clear that no, things can change, but no one has the right to assume or cause anybody else to assume that this particular issue will have a better uh approach in the future.
Understood, Dan.
Before I call on Ms. Cooley, I just want to reiterate in summary what Dan said. There must be disclosure because you cannot assume, because somebody lives within three miles of this site, that they're aware of that issue. So I'm underlining what Mr. Matthews said. Mary Ann, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
I do have a couple of things. Um, I look forward to seeing this building come back to life. I think that will be an asset in the Heights to have it uh back in business. Um the idea of the West Street entrance being the main entrance is one that every time you say it, I have to kind of wrap my head around because I do not think of that as the main entrance to this building from all the times that I've been there. But um it will be interesting to see how that sense gets created. I actually like the patios that run along the street, and I think that will add a great element to the street in addition to being a nice amenity for the folks who live there. The one piece that always gives me pause with these proposals, and I I don't know that we have anything quite like this in Needham today. Um but affordable units, uh when we're talking about senior healthcare, I do worry that you get residents who get into trouble, particularly in the affordable units, um with being able to afford the unit and the amenities that go with it. Um so I'll be interested in understanding how that gets structured and what the approaches for that, for increases for the future. How you think about that?
Thank you. Um, I would also like to say that I live in the Heights. Um, there is a lot of concern about what the future for this building is. I think the proposal you presented will get broad support. And I'm very anxious to see how it develops as you go through the vetting process with the planning board and public hearings. I would only observe, and I never thought I'd say this, I think you do yourself a disservice on some of the the views, the um blocking the um word finding. Um, the the illustrations, because you're looking at the building from a higher height than somebody on the street, so it shows the uh extra height disadvantage, particularly on the eastern side of the building. But I I think it's better to do it that way than to show less impact.
Yeah, thank you, Mo. In fact, when we, when we were uh planning on what kind of presentation um we should give and what elevations we should show, um both LCB and Evans and I made sure that there was at least one elevation from the second floor, because I've been through too many hearings where we would have fifteen views and someone would say, well, I'm six feet tall on the second floor. So.
Well, Roy, so it's good.
Yeah.
Um, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming in. We look forward to watching your progress as you come to town meeting.
Like, and our, my only, I'm sorry, my my only last question is, obviously, the uh the planning board was satisfied and agreed to sponsor it. What what we're looking for um eventually is uh your support and approval, uh because we would love the planning board to make their presentation and then have the selectmen stand up and say they support it. So I'm not asking for a vote tonight, but I'd like, you know, that's clearly uh important to us uh because we want to be sure that the planning board, the selectmen, and the finance committee uh all approve uh of what we're proposing. So I'll I'll leave it to you in terms of timing. Um but it it's also helpful when we talk to other people to be able to say that, you know, the planning board said this and the board of selectmen said something else.
Well, this meeting is a matter of public record, Roy. I think you heard the responses from everybody on this board. Typically, we take up zoning uh articles after the planning board makes a recommendation, not always, but typically. And I think you can get a pretty good sense from the discussion you heard this evening.
We have, and and thank you for your uh your time. We went over the time limit a little, but I appreciate your uh giving us the time.
And we appreciate you, all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Much for your time.
Thank you very much. Um before we come to the next item, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Bullion.
Chairman, thank you, I'd like to move the appointments and the consent agenda.
Second.
This is motion and a second, any discussion? Uh although, I'm gonna call the roll. Um, Ms. Cooley?
Hi.
Mr. Barelli?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yep.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to the approval of the sale of bonds and notes. And I will note that Evelyn Poness, is she with us?
Mr. Chair, if we could.
And Treasurer and Davidson, Assistant Town Manager are here. And.
And our town clerk.
Is here. Um, Dave, do you want to do the presentation?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Um, the town treasurer and I are coming before the board to ask uh your approval on the sale of both uh bonds and a note. Uh the bond that the town has uh put forth is a combination of financing several uh capital projects that are ongoing or nearing completion. Uh most notably, the public safety buildings and the Williams School, as well as the town has taken advantage of an opportunity to do some what's called advanced refunding, or in other words, um being able to pay down some debt early and to reissue the debt at a lower interest rate. And with that, uh Mr. Chairman, we uh are gonna be generating one point two million dollars in savings and on a present value basis, just under seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars over the course of the original debt service, which was a nine-year period. And to be clear, we have not extended the length of this debt. It is still gonna mature uh over the next nine years. And as I stated on the opening remarks, we also have taken an opportunity to pay down some existing water and sewer debt, which gives us some added flexibility going forward into the future, as well as some of the actions that the board will be asked to take later on in the year when we look at sewer and water rates. Uh, Mr. Chair, we uh did meet with the uh Standard and Poor's back in May, at the end of May, to give them an update. As you can imagine, they had many questions about COVID nineteen and the actions the town has uh taken to date and when we spoke to them in our plan uh course of action. Uh not only in terms of how the year end for fiscal two thousand and twenty was gonna look, but also what we were thinking for twenty-one. And um we laid those out uh at the time, we had not yet had town meeting, but we had explained to them what we were going forward with, with the uh same budget and uh the adjustments that we made to uh revenues, the projects that we scaled back and items that we have deferred, uh which uh they felt very confident and reassured. And as a result, they reaffirmed the town's triple-A rating. And more importantly, they still view Needham as a stable, reliable credit. Uh and as a result of that, Mr. Chair, we received nine bids for the bonds. We uh the top uh bidder, which provides the lowest interest expense to the town, was UMB Bank. And uh they offered interest rates that ranged between two and five percent and a premium that results into two factors. One, a true interest cost of one point five one percent, and the ability to uh to finance uh two two million and fifty thousand dollars worth of projects with the premium, which effectively reduces the cost to the taxpayer uh for debt service for those uh projects. And uh we used the largest sum of the uh premium towards the public safety building, which of course is excluded debt, so effectively are reducing the long-term burden of debt service on that project. And uh one last thing, Mr. Chairs, we also issued a a short note uh that will mature in December. It's effectively one of the last borrowings associated with the Williams School. Uh we're waiting for a complete closeout of the project and the audit with the Mass uh school building assistance authority, so they can make their final payment to the town for their share of the project. And whatever portion uh remains, we will either be paying it down in December or combining it with another bond issue. And with that, Mr. Chair, the treasurer and I are, will accept questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. I would also note that we've been joined by the town clerk, Mr. Teddy Eaton, welcome, Teddy. Um, are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Hearing, oh, Mr. Bullion.
Uh, are we ready for motion, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Ms. Cooley, do you have a comment or a question before the motion is made?
I was just gonna say, great, great, thanks again, Dave.
Sure.
I think I could safely say that Ms. Cooley speaks for all of us. Um, Mr. Bullion, you may proceed.
Thank you. Um, I would move that the that the select board uh vote to approve the suggested, the motions labeled Motion A through K, eleven motions, that are listed in the agenda fact sheet and include included on the town website. And that is my motion. I I the only thing I'm not sure about is that we have priests, we have signed uh the authorizations. Normally, we would sign in person. Is there anything to the motion that needs to be incorporated, Dave, for or Teddy with respect to uh?
Those signatures.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh the uh those signatures don't count until this vote happens. And assuming the board votes affirmatively, then uh you're relieved of the duty of signing everything as we traditionally do when we're actually before you in person.
Thank you, David.
And my motion is is as it stands, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I second that motion, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion before we come to the vote?
Let's just say, good work.
Excellent. Um, we'll take the vote by voice, we'll start with Mr. Barelli.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Uh, thank you again, Dave, thank you, Evelyn.
Uh, and Mr. Chair, as the note, the town clerk has witnessed that you actually did vote this and uh not under duress. And again, most importantly, you should be thanking your town treasurer for successfully pulling this deal off.
Thank you. Thank you all for.
Thank you, Evy.
Hard work.
Evy, thank you.
Thanks, Evy. That brings us to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few items for you. The first would be a request that the board extend the spring license renewals. These are um the type of licenses that the board typically reviews in the spring, including secondhand articles, pool tables, taxi, livery, and bowling alley. Um, a lot of uh businesses that typically uh apply for or renew these licenses are just getting back up to speed. And so it's our recommendation that you extend them um from June thirtieth again to August thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Is there any discussion before a motion is made? Do I have a motion?
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion is made and seconded. Haring Nun, we come to the vote. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Barelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous.
So, Mr. Chair, the second um is an item that we're calling Unite Against Racism Initiative in Needham. And as a result of uh the events that uh of the last few months that I know you're all aware of, select board members have having a lot of conversations with members of the community, heard from town meeting. Um, we're hearing a lot of folks um writing in on emails, sending us letters, calling, and providing comments and asking questions. Um, also at the town meeting, uh the board committed to hosting a community forum uh to have conversations about um issues of racial justice in Needham. Uh, we had talked, and when we thought about the forum, about an in-person event where people could all gather together. We aren't gonna be able to do that for a while still. And so um I know there's a sense of um timeliness that uh many people have expressed, and and I and I agree, Mr. Chair. So I'm recommending that the board have a kickoff session at your meeting on July twenty-first. Um, beginning with really listening to the concerns and suggestions of the community. And we would put out a call for um folks who want to um. And we would put out a call for folks who want to have something to say. And also, if they just wanted to send in questions or comments, we could share those. I would provide you at before, between now and then, with a proposed structure of the meeting, but really just try to get some, some input from the public. I would expect that that would be a listening meeting and hearing, gathering more questions and comments. We have been taking all of the requests for materials and questions that we have been answering for folks, and we will have them up on our website as of tomorrow, so that we can have a place to point people and they can, they'll continue to check back to see other questions that have been asked. I think we have an opportunity to provide more information about town services and operations. And then after that meeting, or perhaps even another meeting, an ongoing project of crafting strategies to address any priorities that are identified that the board wanted to tackle. I wanted to note also that we've started the process of structuring discussions among our staff on these issues. So this is a, there's a staff-wide internally focused initiative, and then this would be more of an external, an externally focused initiative for the community. So I would propose that your next meeting on July 21st have that component, and then we could start crafting the message to get out so that folks could know how, that they could share and participate.
Thank you, Kate. And I, I can say that the one glaring truth I've gotten from recent events is that whatever I thought I knew about this issue is not adequate to understanding the issue. So I think we're, as a community, on a, a long learning curve to finally attune, to the extent possible, what people are facing. And I think that will help us craft responses and solutions to problems we can identify that way, rather than starting with solutions that may or may not fit in Needham. So I, I look forward to that session and the work that will ultimately follow from that. And I really appreciate what you're doing here, Kate. I'd like to open up the discussion. If anybody else has any. Matt?
Thank you, and I think it's a good idea. I know we mentioned at a town meeting, but I think it's time to listen to the community, and that's what I, and I know that's what we all want to do. We hear from so many different people, and some of it's anecdotal, and you, you know, you don't know, you're not getting a full sense of what is going on in our community, Needham. You know, people talk about national issues. I want to hear about, from the people, what their experience in Needham before we even try to come up with solutions that we can, we can, you know, bring forward to try to, try to help solve these issues. So I wish we could do it outside or in a public forum. I think Zoom will have to do in the interim, but just trying to get a, an idea of what the, the actual problems are, what the perceived problems are, and, and a little more, you know, focus to, to what we have to do. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mary Ann, do you have any questions, comments, or?
So I think, I do think this is a good first step for us. And as Matt just said, and, and Kate said, it's important to understand that this is a listening session, really to hear input from people and questions from people. But it will be data-led, right? So to the extent that people have given us questions, Kate and the town staff have been working to answer those questions and make the answers available. And I would encourage people really to take advantage of learning what is already happening. And I think there are cases where the data that we have raises other questions and will give us new avenues to explore and understand about our community's response. So it's a, it's a good discussion. I'm glad we're on this path.
Thank you, Mary Ann. John?
I agree with your opening that, that we are going to learn from this forum. This will give rise to more questions for which we will all collectively have to look to get more answers. And this is a learning experience for all of us. And I wholeheartedly agree. I agree with what Matt said. Yeah, this is listening. We need to hear what people have to say. And collectively, we can hopefully move forward and learn from this.
Thanks, John. Dan?
Yeah, we've, you know, we've had an opportunity to reflect in recent weeks, and we've heard from residents, some, some know, some that have been here a long time. I think back a couple of members of this board actually went to, you know, our graduates of the high school. We were there at the, at the, at the event last week. We've made a lot of progress over the years, but not nearly as much as we should have, both here in this town and as, and as a nation. So this is an opportune time, difficult as it may be. And I'm, and hopefully, we can make more progress and improve as a town and as a nation. And the steps the town manager has recommended make a lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to say that we have and will continue to rely on the advice and counsel of our Human Rights Committee, who can be really helpful for us in this, in this process.
Thank you.
I do have just a few other quick items for you, Mr. Chair. That's okay. I wanted to let the board know that the Center for Public Safety Excellence has granted our fire chief a designation of chief fire officer. And this makes Chief Condon only one of 1,461 chief fire officers or designees worldwide. The Designee is a program recognizing excellence in components, including experience, education, professional development, contributions to the profession, association membership, and in our chief's case, presidency this year, community involvement, and technical competence. So that's a really exciting thing for us, and I wanted to acknowledge the chief in that, in that regard.
Right, Kate.
The second is actually a little bit related to the last item, but I wanted to note that we have a number of Needham residents who are participating in vigils and demonstrations to denounce racism. And these, these large gatherings are still happening during the court, the period of COVID and the emergency declarations. So we just wanted to remind people to stay vigilant about wearing their face coverings and practicing social distancing while they're, they're doing vigils. I can say, as I know many of you who were at the event hosted by the students about a week ago, a week and a half ago, that we were very encouraged by the number, virtually. I didn't, I don't think I saw a single person without a mask, and people were practicing social distancing. And, and that's how we're going to be able to do both things at once. So I really appreciate that. And on a similar vein, folks who go to the RTS often end up in close proximity to each other. And we really are asking and continue to message that if you're bringing your recyclables or your household waste to the RTS, if you would continue to practice social distancing, but wear a face covering, it would, it would benefit everybody. So those are the, those are the two things about, about that. And then the last one, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to highlight, as we've done in a couple of times, some of the work that some of our departments are doing. I, I, today I picked up library books, checked out for me by a library staff at the curbside area. And I, I was just so excited to get my hands on some new books from the library, and they're doing a great job. I can tell you, the table was full. There must have been 25 or 50 bags of books for people picking them up. I also noticed on our, on our website that if you don't know anymore what to get your kids, they'll make you a children's bundle and you can pick it up. So I think they're doing some really cool, innovative things over there. And the other thing, our Aging Services Division, which is probably, along with the library, going to be one of the last to open up. I just wanted, you know, just some amazing work that, that the staff under Latanya's direction are doing. They're delivering bags of produce that they're partnering with Needham Public Schools on. They're, they're delivering, every day they're delivering lunches. They've delivered 4,996 lunches since the closing in March to people who need it. They're also delivering groceries through our partnership with Trader Joe's, 40 bags last week for 520 bags of groceries that we've delivered since the closing. Here's a new one. The Community Council has sponsored 15 Amazon Fire tablets that we're using to help seniors who don't have the techno, don't had, had the technology to be able to use to connect with family and loved ones. And the best part of that part is that we're using student volunteers to do the tech support for the folks using the tablet. So I just, that's a wonderful program that we're doing. We still have the Phone Pal program, where middle and high school students are reaching out, and our staff call everybody in our database on a rotating basis. We, we are running every single exercise program that we had planned to run, and we've even added more, and they're all doing those on Zoom. And then Aging Services, along with Youth Services and Park and Recreation, have created a social distancing calendar for every day of the week. So those are just a couple of things that we're doing to engage, because as we all know, isolation and loneliness can be a very unhealthy thing. And so we want to try to keep, keep our, our most vulnerable residents engaged in our communities. That, Mr. Chair, that's my report.
Thank you. We've had a, we have a committee report from Mary Ann Cooley on the economic development efforts of the committee she heads. Mary Ann?
Just a very quick update, I think, this week. The efforts continue, working with folks in town to understand what we can do to help them do business better. Over the past week, I think the last time that this group met, we had talked about the plan to meet with merchants who were along Great Plain Avenue. We had that meeting a week ago. And in fact, some plans have just come in from some folks there. So some tables went out and some new plans have come in. Different merchants have made different decisions. So, you know, it's very interesting. I've spoken to any number of people from town, and I get calls from people saying, you know, "We think the town ought to close the following streets and ought to do X, Y, and Z." It's very interesting, but we're working very hard to be led by what the various restaurants and merchants want to do. And shockingly, they don't necessarily all want to close streets, which has been interesting to us, because I think we were willing to explore that, and we haven't quite gone that far, as it turns out. So we are working with each to find a proposal that we think will meet what they are trying to accomplish for goals right now. And they are looking at trying to understand what the state continues to offer as things open gradually up and looking at that for their mix of business. And I hope that the people who are in town will continue to patronize and get out to Needham restaurants and businesses and shop local.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Are there any questions for Mary Ann? I know that sometimes, the committee is moving very fast, so sometimes everybody isn't up to speed. But are there any unanswered questions? Matt?
Mr. Chair, again, I want to thank you and Mary Ann for the, in the committee, for the swift work, you know, going out to these restaurants and sitting outside. I've been to, I don't know, two or three, as most of us have. And what a great experience. So thank you, and great job. And Sandy, of course, getting everything coordinated with the Jersey barriers and public safety. So it's a lot of work. I was asked by one restaurant, I guess in other towns and cities, they're reimbursing for some of their furniture, like tablecloths or chairs, et cetera. I know that'd be probably difficult in the way we do our business, but I don't know if it's something as we look to permitting for the restaurants, if there's some type of, you know, lower fee we can give them or something that we can give it to them on the other end if they request it. Just a thought, it was just a request I got from one of the restaurants. Just wanted to throw it out there. Didn't know if, you know, something we can talk about maybe later on. But other than that, terrific, it's good to see this place is opening.
Mary Ann, you wanted to say something.
So I should have noted, we, I think that's another good question to put in the hopper, Matt. We've had a couple of other suggestions for things that we might be able to consider, and I think we need to sort of scope what the, the value of those are and what it will mean to us and understand them a little bit better. I should have said, I think we are now up to about 19 different restaurants in town that we have worked with to do some, you know, accommodation, change to premises, tables out, special barriers for them. So it's, it's, continues to come in. I think there were two or three more today. So every time we think, well, maybe that's all it's going to be, some more, some more do come in. So people will continue to figure out what can work for them in the best way possible to keep their business going.
Thank you. And another word with respect to Sandy. Sandy not only staffs this committee, she is the contact person. So she's administering all of these applications, and it's moving very fast. And Sandy is moving faster than they're hitting it at her. So thank you again. Any other closing comments or any other committees? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's not going to be, for lack of a second, is it?
Second.
Mr. Bullion, seconds. We come to the roll call. Dan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.